The following program is the first Tuesday of the month Opeka City Council meeting.
Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our regular scheduled city council meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, August 1st, 2023, and it's 6:01 PM. And I'll call this meeting to order, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Sandy, would you read the Clerk Sylvan meeting statement? Oh.
Barb.
I was just telling her that the Pledge of Allegiance is up here, and I said if I'm mayor any longer, I might have to read it when I say that. Can I do that? Sorry, Barb. Go ahead.
All right, Jim, I'll read it for you.
Jim?
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Colin Dijkstra?
Here.
Lori Chestnut? Paul Hagan?
Here.
Henry Velicker?
Here.
Scott Porczatski?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Dimitri Martin?
Here.
Corey Nagel?
Here.
Eric Olson?
Here.
Nine eyes, we have a quorum.
You know, in my defense, I did ask you to read the open meeting.
All right, sorry. It's not going to be me. Sorry. This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Barb, and could you just introduce us, or introduce yourself and start the meeting?
Barb Nowak, City Clerk.
Aaron Johnson, City Administrator.
Eric Bailey, Library Director.
Jared Requieu, Community and Economic Development.
Stephanie Rife, Finance Director.
Justin Behrens, Director of Public Works.
Brian Hozell, Chief of Police.
Steve Skarsen, City Attorney.
Thanks, Steve. And Laura is not here tonight. She's on a trip to Iceland. She's on vacation this week. And then, of course, Josh is behind the curtains tonight at IT. So let's move on, then. We have a consent agenda, a number of items on that consent agenda. We can take those with one motion in a second unless you want to, you see something that should be moved to the regular agenda.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second?
Motion by Olson, second by Martin, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Regular agenda, no additions to the agenda. So we'd just be looking for a motion to approve so that we can move forward.
Move to approve.
Motion by Peterson?
Second.
Second by Dijkstra, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Carries. Announcements and correspondence. We have a number of certificates appreciation tonight, which none of them are in attendance tonight, but I'll read them off. We have a presentation of a certificate for Jan Rodamacher, and she also gets a chamber gift card because she's has 25 years of a service with the city, and she works in the library. Eric, sometime, can you grab those? And you have another couple here yet, too. We also have one for Ralph Small, who's also been with the city for 25 years, and he's in the IT Opeka Online. And then we also have Scott Mina, who has 20 years of service with the city of Opeka. Durant Papal, who has five years of service with Opeka Online. And then the last two are with the library, Taylor Wilcox and Alexandria Lisagar?
Lisagar.
Lisagar, for also five years of service. So Barb will get these to you guys, so you can give them to your individuals. Make sure you thank them for their service. I'm sure you have already. Next up, we have public input. This is for non-agenda items. If there's anybody in the audience, staff or council, that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item, just state your name and limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Henry, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to publicly congratulate our Director of Public Works for being inducted into the Lawrence University Interscholastic Hall of Fame. And he even had a picture, so congratulations.
That's pretty awesome.
Did you, you guys need a little more detail? He was third in school history for number of carries, or no, number of yards, and second for a number of carries. I think I got that right.
Five yards a carry. And he learned it all in.
Backyard football.
Yeah. All right. Well, really, congratulations, Justin.
Thank you, guys.
Nice honor.
All right. Anybody else with public input? If not, we'll move on to unfinished business. This has to do with ordinance number 06, 2023. This is an amendment to Chapter 8.06, parent, two parent half, obstruction and encroachments. And this is the second reading, so we are going to ask that you vote on that tonight, if you're ready. And I'll turn it over to Jared.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This one's on page 50 of your packets. The gist of this one, it is expanding the areas where businesses can have H-frame portable signs and other items out in front of their stores with the expansion of businesses off of Main Street to the side streets in our downtown. Staff felt it necessary to include those side streets so that they can also have those signs and those items out, which I think we think that makes the areas look very vibrant and active. So just something we wanted to amend and make sure that they can do as well.
Thanks. I think this is an awesome amendment. Downtown businesses, more marketing and advertising tools. So I like it. Anybody like to make a motion to approve this, change in the ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Martin, that we approve ordinance number 06, 2023. Any discussion? If not, Barb will call the roll.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine eyes, motion carried.
All right. Another one here, Jared. This is also a second reading. This is for Chapter 07, 2023, creation of Chapter 17.316, mural, and amendment of Chapter 17.500 sign. Again, as I said, this is a second reading. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor. This one starts on page 52 of your packets. Just to this one, it is introducing a specific mural ordinance. Just kind of separating, the intent of this one is to separate murals from wall signs. So I will note, we did receive some comments on this mural section of the ordinance. And after discussing it with those individuals, we did discuss that with the main intent of this mural ordinance to separate murals from signage, that it would be best to proceed with the ordinance as is, and that we could always revisit maybe some more specific topics that should be added or considered within the mural ordinance. Rest of the ordinance looks to just clean up some of our signage code, clean up some window and door sign issues that were present with a lot of businesses over the last couple of years, flags, some definitions, and then just making the sign standard section a little more clear, adding, you know, items like per sign, per building, just try to make it as clear as physically possible to staff as well as the common business owner and resident that may be reading it. So I'd have to take any questions if there are any.
Thanks, Jared. Anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Henry.
Yeah, I want to commend the staff to pursue breaking out that mural ordinance. And I think some of the concern I heard, and Jared might have heard the same, is we've got a historic downtown, and we want to make sure we don't have, we want to be respectful of that and that we just don't get proliferated with murals. But I think the really good thing is there is a process now in place. So I don't know that there's any rush to go to any changes, but I think over the coming months, and we should probably talk about it a little more. But I think it's a good change from the couple of people I spoke with about it. And these were comments after the public hearing. It's always that way, right? You hear it after the public hearing, so.
We're not going to get away from not talking about signs.
Oh, no. These are good improvements.
All right. Thanks, Henry. Anybody else have any comments? Anybody want to make a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Velicker, that we approve ordinance number 07, 2023. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, under new business, we have, you're a busy man tonight, Jared. Under new business, conditional use permit for Zellman and Zimbra Trust owners and Andrew Helverson Ellis Construction applicant for 1608 Townsend Road. And this is something that's gone through City Planning Commission, so Jared, I'm going to let you set this up and explain it.
Thank you very much, Mayor. This one starts on page 83 of your packets. Since this one is a bit unique, I'm going to start off by saying the city staff, city attorney, have both recommended denial of this conditional use permit. And then the Plan Commission has recommended denial of this permit with a, I don't know the exact vote count. There was one that voted against the denial. So other than that, passed with the Plan Commission with a recommendation to deny. So leading with that, the conditional use permit is requesting, I'll read exactly what they put, but they are allowing, requesting a conditional use that is similar, sorry, an unlisted specific use substantially similar to several uses which are allowed via conditional use in the B3 zoning district. The specific land uses that they mentioned were offices or professional services, facilities of educational nature, schools, and truck garages. Now, upon reviewing their application and what they are looking to do, it was staff's and the attorney's opinion that what they are looking to do, which is specifically schools, is not exactly accurate with what they are truly looking to do, which is a truck training facility and drone training facility. Per staff's interpretation of exactly what they're looking to do, the best categories for what they have specifically listed as commercial driving school and training facility with drone training would be best fit under light industrial and light manufacturing land use, and then sales, service, and repair of category and heavy-duty vehicles, which would be trucks, tractor trailers, things like that, coach buses. And then in terms of the other ones, like offices, that would be a permitted use if it was specifically offices. But it is not just offices. So I guess going more through this, you know, again, I should note, it is not that we're looking if this, what they're looking to do exactly, which would be the CDL school and drone training facility, is best for this parcel in particular, but we're looking at the zoning in particular. So if you go to page 85 in your packets, there is a clip of the zoning map. And it's kind of a zoomed-out clip. So you'll see in the zoning map that this property is zoned B3, which is general commercial district. In the general commercial district, which again would be similar to our Churchill Street, which is like that lower-intensity commercial district, it is zoned that way as it was a bar. Now, the applicants are looking to do a light industrial land use out on that parcel, which again would not be permitted in the B3 zoning district. And their, again, argument towards that is that it was actually technically a school. Now, in talking with their attorney, we do not have a true definition of school in our zoning code. Now, Steve has found an applicable definition, which I'm sure he is more than happy to share. But essentially, school per our zoning code is meaning like the learning center, the middle school, an alternative school. It's really a classroom setting only. It's not dealing with tractor trailers, driving, you know, maneuvering, heavy equipment by any means. So in this case, once you start entering into that truck, heavy equipment, tractor trailers, et cetera, you're getting out of the definition of school, and that's where you jump to that light industrial land use. So hopefully that made a lot of sense. Probably clear as mud. Happy to take any questions. Otherwise, I'll let maybe Steve comment on that definition of school and maybe any other comments that he may have on this one.
Yes, thank you very much. The concept, and I did quite a bit of analysis on this, and I've still done even up to the last week because of some of the issues that were raised by the gentleman at the Planning Commission meeting and some of the comments that came from the Planning Commission meeting. I think the first thing to recognize is the responsibility of the council and the Plan Commission to follow the code, the municipal code, because that identifies what uses are permitted. And anytime you go away from the code, you have to keep in mind the purpose of the code, or in this case, the purpose of the district. And that's what I think was the most important aspect. If you've had an opportunity to read the legal opinion that I issued on June 5th, I think it's part of your packet, is under the second analysis of the consideration of what a conditional use permit is. Conditional use permit only arises where the, there is a permitted use as a condition. And in this case, there was really nothing specific. Now, I did take the opportunity to do as much research as possible on what one could interpret as a school. And frankly, it probably became more obvious than one can imagine that in most zoning codes and in the national treatises on zoning, there's kind of an understanding that school means an academic facility that is, I guess, what we consider where we went to school as we grew up. And then there's always special definitions of institutional schools, which are your colleges and universities, and their definitions of your technical schools. In many of your communities, they create those separate. I was able to find, after a lot of research, a case called the Board of Regents of the United States, or University of Wisconsin versus the Dane County Board of Adjustment. It was a court of appeals case from August 31st of 2002. That case is the only place where I found a clear definition. It says, "Schools means any private, public, or religious school, but does not include either truck-driving schools or construction equipment operator schools unless expressly stated otherwise in this chapter." And so what the concept was, is when you're taking specialty schools, you have to identify specialty schools in your ordinance. So the concept here is, if the city wants to allow truck-driving schools or CDL training schools or engineering schools, then you need to create a specific ordinance that allows that. Otherwise, the presumption is it's not a permitted use in a district where the word "school" is identifying what is a permitted use. And I think it's very clear. Now, that's the only case I could find in Wisconsin that talked about truck-driving schools. I did look at some other cities that do have institutions, and they've all been put in special institutional districts or industrial districts. In other words, they go to a district that's a training centers district where it specifically says we're going to have training centers. Most of the training centers in Wisconsin, if they have any component that is outdoors, those are in rural-type settings or areas. Now, there are some CL, CDL training schools, which is classroom-only, that are in metropolitan areas, but they have no trucks on site. In other words, the students go to school, they get in their car, they drive to a site that's out in the country or some other place, and they drive their vehicles. And those have been put into what they call the technical school category. That's as much research as I found as far as what you should do and what you. But my bottom line, and I'll just say it, is you really cannot, under your current ordinance, allow that in this B2 district without changing your ordinance. It just would be violative, your ordinance, and it would be violative of the law. It's not even a power you really have, because doing it would be ignoring that your ordinance has language that says nothing about allowing that. So that's my two cents worth for whether it's worth. But I'll answer any questions, because I did do a lot of research on this and tried to interpret what could be done and what couldn't be done.
Thanks, Steve. So you're, under the current zoning, the ordinance does not fit?
Correct. Oh, this ordinance definitely does not fit. It'd be two. Yeah, no way.
But their option, and you gave them options if they wanted to continue to pursue this, and that would be to request that those be.
Yeah, so it fits in the industrial districts is really the intent of where this would fit. So by possibly looking at a rezone of this entire area into industrial, that would be an option. Otherwise, we could look and assist them in finding land that already is zoned industrial in our industrial park to the north of Royalton. We also have a few other industrial parcels that may also be a fit for them that are already zoned industrial, so.
But you're going to have to recognize it'll probably have to be a conditional use because it's got to be compatible with the other industrial uses. You keep that in mind. In other words, for example, a drone operation wouldn't be compatible next to the airport. So it's not a slam dunk, so to speak. I think the classroom, if it was pure classroom, no trucks, you know, you got in your family car and drove away, that could be in this district.
So as Jared said before, City Planning Commission did deny this request. It is being brought forward to council with the recommendation that we also deny this request given the information that we received from Jared and the city. Anybody have any questions that like to make a motion?
I would move to deny conditional use permit for 1608 Townsend Road.
I'll second.
We have motion by Hagan, second by Olson, that we deny the conditional use permit for 1608 Townsend Road. Any discussion? Henry?
Just a question of staff. Did the applicant follow up with you after the Plan Commission at all?
We did not hear anything from the attorney or the applicant.
And they're not here this evening?
They're not here this evening.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks. We were expecting maybe some representation tonight, and we didn't. Sandy?
No, I appreciate your work, Steve, and the extra work. I followed up because I had the question about the school. And I wish I would have asked those questions at the Plan Commission, because I, you know, I followed up with Jared on it. So I'm a lot clearer on it than I was at the Plan Commission. Thank you for this extra work on it.
Thank you. So just so we're clear, and Barb just reminded me to make sure I tell you this, too. So when you vote aye, you're actually voting to deny, okay? Everybody understand that? All right. Barb will call the roll.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Nine eyes, motion carried.
Thank you, Jared. Steve, thank you very much.
You bet. I know you want me to leave, so I can't charge, so.
You're a quick learner.
If there's anything else you want me for.
Nobody ask him anymore twice.
I'm conscious. I know.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Yeah. Hey, we got to go back a page here, everybody. I'm sorry that I goofed up here. But ordinance approvals have to have roll call votes, and we did a voice vote, so if we go back, thank you. If we go back to 07, 2023, that was the one with the mural and the signed ordinance. We did a, we need to do a roll call vote on that. So everybody remembers the motion. It was to approve. So Barb is going to call the roll on that.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Nine eyes, motion carried.
All right. Thank you. All right, next up, we have, under license reports, we have a license report number 1635. This is a Class A intoxicating liquor license and Class A fermented malt beverage license for the Gouda Life, which Sheila Jacobson is the agent for this property. Sheila's actually here tonight, so if you want to ask her questions on this. Now, remember that a Class A license is to sell unopened product, okay? Not product that you can consume on the premise. That would be a Class B license. This is a Class A, like a liquor store, basically. All right? So I don't, I don't know who's taking this. But that's as much information as we have. Does anybody have any questions on this? And do you want Sheila to step up to the podium? Do you have questions of her, or?
I just was wondering about her business, just amid.
This is a good time for her to promote.
Yeah.
Free advertising.
Yeah. So Sheila, just give me your name, please, for the record.
My name is Sheila Jacobson.
I was just wondering what your business is. I can't really tell by the names. I thought you might like a moment to tell everybody about it.
It's going to be an artisan cheese shop with like a specialty foods market, including wine, beer, possibly some liquor. Focusing on Wisconsin products, but it will not be all Wisconsin products.
That sounds rather nice.
And I was just asking this right before the meeting, too. What's your plan when you'll have this all up and running and so on?
I am hoping shortly after Labor Day, we'll see with inspections and the plumbing hurdle. But that's, the new target is shortly after Labor Day.
Great. All right. Anybody else have, yeah, Paul, go ahead.
Where are you located?
At 112 North Main Street.
Oh, okay, cool.
So it was the glass store before.
That's why that address sounds familiar. My wife used to work there. That's why that sounds familiar. My wife used to work there. It was a hair salon years ago.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Velicker, second by Olson, that we approve license report 1635. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Got me jumping. Okay, you're good to go. Thank you, Sheila. Mid-contact with Barb, and she'll make sure you get all the things you need. Make contact with Barb, and she'll make sure you get all the things you need. Next up, we have a request by Mike Stroick for HH Heiner Brewing Company to expand his outdoor service area for Heiner Fest, and Aaron has talked to Mike, so we're gonna, look, Aaron, lead this.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Mike was, wanted to send his apologies. He did plan to be here if something came up, and he is not able to make it, so I just want to communicate basically what he has on page 107. This Heiner Fest is gonna be the same as last year and years prior. Saturday, September 9th this year, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., the live music will be in the tent from noon until 8:00 p.m. You'll see that there is a map in your packet that you probably can't read, so I wanted to bring up this map, which is gonna be the exact same setup. It's actually a map from last year, and this is how he's gonna have it set up. This is, again, a request to temporarily expand outdoor, his outdoor service area for those times I had mentioned on that date. Any questions?
Do I have any questions? All right, again, this is not any different than they've had the last few years here, so I think it's okay to approve. If you guys are all right with that, we would need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sorry, who was, who was that?
Colin.
Colin. Motion by Dykstra, second by Scott?
Paul.
Paul, I'm sorry. By Hagan to approve this request. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Next up, we have an application for a temporary Class B, Class B retailers license for the Opec Area Triathlon, and Aaron, this is you, too.
Thanks, Mayor Smith. On your pack, in your packet on page 109, you'll see an application for the temporary Class B retailers license. This is to basically sell beer at the event. I do have a map I want to bring up. Well, before we do that, let's give the date. This triathlon is August 19th, and Henry, is this the 22nd year?
Yes, but only the 21st actual running, I believe, because of COVID. We had one year. We didn't run it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
In 2000, that was our first race.
Yeah, so the, so the triathlon's been going strong since 2000 with that hiccup year of COVID. It's been an, it's been a great community event. Sounds like participation is tracking this year close to last year. We're looking for an approval to have HH Heiner come and sell beer in the green space by the fountain from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This is something that you, we do see at other likewise events, and this would be an added thing for the Opec Area Triathlon this year. The boundaries of this license, the request would just be to make it the boundaries of South Park. You can see, I just have a little orange square there on where they may be set up. So, Henry, anything you'd like to add to that?
Well, I think in years past, we have talked about doing this, and I think it was just another detail that we just kind of wanted to get to the essence of the race, but we did survey the participants, and just to try to get an updated feel for these events and learn more about kind of where things were going. And this came out pretty strong as an amenity that they, the participants would like to see, and so that's why we're bringing it, bringing it forward. You know, I, I don't know that you'll see a lot of spectators imbibing that early in the morning, but, but they certainly could. It's more for the participants than anything.
So, this is something new, though.
Yes, sir. Yeah, this would be the first year, yeah.
I just asked Barb to, to make sure that she checks to make sure that this is okay, that we're taking an off-premise license and approving that, because that's what we're doing here. So, she's gonna check into this. Whatever you approve tonight, it would have to be pending. Doing some research on making sure that you can move a license from someone's premise to another location, okay? And I, I don't know that for sure, so...
Because it's...
Yeah.
Doesn't a license have to be contiguous to an expanded area?
I mean, either way, you want to serve beer, so if it's not HH Heiner you're requesting...
Well, yeah, I think that's the way we envisioned it. They're just the backroom support for us to do it, but I understand now that, yeah, that could be an issue. I don't...
Yeah.
Yeah, but if the approval could be contingent, and then we just make a decision if it's not a, wow, we won't do it then, of course, or then we'll just have to do it as a board, as a triathlon, as the nonprofit.
Yeah.
Mayor? Who gets the profits?
Pardon?
Who gets the profits from, from the beer sales?
They're being provided the drink, the participants, but if somebody comes up, it would be Heiner.
Okay.
We talked a, a little bit about splitting, but we never got to that point to officially figure that out. So, at this point, they would take it.
Okay, that, that would matter, in my opinion. If they were just there to help you serve beer, and the profits went to the triathlon, I would think it would be your beer event then. If they're taking the profits, then I think they're moving their operation to the park.
Okay, that's a good distinction. We'll have to follow up on that. Well, we don't have another meeting before the event, do we?
Well, the triathlon is a nonprofit, so they can get a temporary license without HH Heiner, and then they can serve...
And that's what this is?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, I would think I would take HH Heiner out of it.
Okay.
Your request, I mean, in my mind, HH Heiner should not be included in this.
Even if they don't take any sales, and it's sort of a sponsorship?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that answer, Henry. But, yeah, I do know that you can, well, I don't know that. That's why I asked Barb to check in. But I do know that you can get a, as a nonprofit, you can get a permit to serve beer in the park. I just don't know that HH Heiner can get a permit to serve beer...
Right. That is correct.
In the park. So, it has to be, it has to be the triathlon that allows it.
It's the proceeds.
It's the proceeds. Well, they confused us, though, by saying that HH Heiner was involved in this.
Well, if council's comfortable doing that contingency, contingently as it is here, then we can ask the question if they can physically be present and kind of be working on our behalf, but they're not taking any profit, and that, is that still considered us as a triathlon? That's the question. And then if it isn't, then we would have to do it all on our own if we want to do it.
Right. Does that make sense?
Is that, is a council comfortable with that approach?
Go ahead, Dave.
There would be time for another council meeting. This is the 19th, and we, I think we're meeting the 15th, although that doesn't give much time, whichever way you decide.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Well, why don't you just table it, and then we'll clean it up and bring it back?
Sorry, I did, we didn't need to put a kick in, but we don't want to do something that's not right.
No, no.
Obviously. I think that's a good idea. Thanks, Dave, for that, and you're okay?
Absolutely, well, yeah. We'll figure out the detail.
Yeah. I do know that when you have five Ks, 10 triathlons, marathons, there's better participation with it here. You know that.
I move to table the application for temporary Class B license until our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Yeah, we motion by Hagan to table.
Second.
Second by Peterson. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Request to hold the Inland Lakes District Budget Hearing in October to allow for Inland Lakes Committee to have input on the proposed budget. Usually, August is our annual Inland Lakes District meeting that we approve a budget, and we, as part of our restructuring this year, we did set up an inland waters committee. They haven't had a lot of time to meet, so they are asking that they have some input on this, so I really don't see any issues. It's still before our budget is finalized, so they've asked that we move those to October, and then we'll act as commissioners on that Inland Lakes District in October on, on what the budget will be for, for the 2024 year. But again, by, I don't know if it's by ordinance or state law, we are required to hold the meeting in, in August unless we get approval to change that. That's why it's here tonight. Okay? So, if you're okay with moving it to October, we would need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to move the Inland Lakes meeting, annual meeting, to October.
Second.
Motion by Velicker, second by Olson, to, to change the Inland Lakes District Budget Hearing until October, instead of August. Any discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, next up, we need to, this is for a rain date, really, road closure request for the outdoor movie at Bank First Property. Jared, you're the lead on this.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Map can be found on page 110 of your packets. So, this map just kind of shows general area, actually right behind City Hall here, in which we're requesting be closed for a rain date movie. The rain date is set for September 8th. It is after school starts, of course, but it is a Friday in the evening, so we hope to still get a pretty good turnout. There would be, if approved, a road closure just to the east of the crosswalk on East Fulton, and then there would be a road closure midway in our parking lot, is that Jefferson? But midway in our parking lot, essentially. It would just be closing off that corner. We would wait to close off any streets until after 5:30, when all of the businesses on that strip are closed. I believe Firefly Floral is the last one that closes at like 5:30. That would be truly blocked off there. And then the thrift shop, I think, is, closes at like 3:30, so they would be well before that, but would be looking for road closure approval there for the movie that would occur in the Bank First, grassy area and parking lot there, seating, lawn chairs, blankets. And then we would also have the streetlights shut off on that corner to make it a little darker for the movie, so as we have pedestrian safety there and streetlights closed, or streetlights shut off, we thought it best to just close off that corner. There would, of course, still be an open lane for any emergency vehicles that we need to get through. We can accommodate anything like that, and then it would be closed off in a way that the Bank First night drop could still be accessed, so. Would be looking for approval for road closure for our rain date, and then hopefully we don't have another rain date. But, and then I don't know if it would be appropriate if we do have another rain date, if it would just be generally approved for the movie, whatever date is selected, or if you'd like me to come back.
You don't have another rain date? A rain date for a rain date?
We just hope we, we don't have to schedule another rain date. That is our hope.
Right. You should come back because it does affect the town.
Sure.
All right, we need a motion to approve if you're okay with this.
I would move to approve, and as part of my motion, deny any rain that decides that might want to follow in the event.
Thanks.
Sure.
The almighty motion.
Motion by Hagan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Porczatsky, to approve the road closure request for the outdoor movie at Bank First Property. Any further discussion? All in favor, oh, Jared, I'm sorry, or?
Colin.
Colin, I'm sorry.
I don't think I've heard the date yet.
September 8th.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And then, as a note, not in this area, but we do plan to have another movie on August 15th that'll be at South Park, so.
All right, are you vote? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, next up, we have license report number 1636. This is on page 111 of your packet. There's two names on there. This is for operators licensed within the city. We would need a motion to approve. I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Martin, that we approve the license report 1636. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Next up, we have the scrap dealers license report 1637. There's one listed on there that should complete all of them, I think.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Dykstra, that we approve license report number 1637. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, and then issues project discussion. This is a 30-minute maximum. We have asked that you extend that for 60 minutes tonight so that Jared has the opportunity to fully explain the revale, the information of the presentation, so, you know, he could explain to you, but we thought that this is a very important thing to get out, and not only to you as council members, but also get it out to, we're gonna put it on our website, too, so that the public can take a look at this, too. I think they do a really good job of this, and I don't want to steal any of Jared's thunder, and if this lasts more than five minutes, I would agree, so, Jared, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I'm just gonna show generally, you know, as we come nearing the end of our reevaluation process, Bomar does hope to have this completed beginning of September at the latest, and then they would prepare mailings to go out to residents by, you know, mid-September, and I believe that they need to have them, you know, somewhere in the 20s, September 20s range. So, after that would come items like open book, port of review, things like that, which we would hope to have all wrapped up by the end of October. More dates will come out, so we will, of course, let you guys know those. We'll also post them on Facebook and any other means of getting that out there as we can. It'll also go out in the letters to the residents. So, one thing I just wanted to generally show the council, and staff for that matter, if you guys do get questions on the revaluation process, we do have a page on our website that does answer some common questions that come up with this, as well as there is a really neat video in which I will show, so everybody can see it. But generally, go to our City of Opec webpage, there is a button, actually right below our logo at the moment, that is revaluation process, so pretty simple to get to. I believe it is actually down here as well in the city news section. So, to get to those Q and As in the video, if you just click the revaluation process, you'll come up with a page which has an outline of what's going on. I believe the video comes right up, and beneath that are some Q and As that are pretty helpful in answering a lot of the questions. So, feel free to direct people to this website or this webpage, or familiar, familiarize yourself with the questions and answers so that you can answer them directly. But I will show the video. I assume sound will play.
What, no popcorn?
Popcorn's actually...
So, there's a lot of misunderstanding about the role of appraisers and how they affect the property tax that homeowners pay. When someone hears the term "appraiser," they seem to think of a scary figure reaching for their wallet. Not so. Appraisers don't set tax rates. Appraisers don't chase tax dollars. An appraiser is interested in fairly determining property values, and they take great pride in it. Property tax is determined by a simple formula. Appraisers only affect one of these variables, the value, and they do so with incredible accuracy. Appraisers aren't tax collectors or even tax setters. They're just fellow taxpayers, and their primary goal is to make everything fair and equitable. Imagine that you are in a restaurant with two friends. One orders a hot dog, one a plate of caviar, and you order a steak. The waiter comes to the table with a total bill of $100, but he doesn't know how much each of you should pay. If everyone paid the same amount, the guy who ordered caviar might be happy. But what about the guy who ordered a hot dog? Enter appraisers. The food is your property. Just like these meals, some people's property is worth more than others, and it's the appraiser's job to determine how much each property is worth. That's it. So, in the same way the value of these menu items would need to be determined, an appraiser places values on properties to ensure fairness and equity. After the appraiser determines the value of each property, local governing bodies will set their budgets for the coming year. They set the tax rate in order to produce the dollars needed for their budgets. The value of a property does not affect the amount of property tax needed. The sum total of all these budgets is a set number that has to be divided up among all the property owners. So, even if everyone's value was cut in half by the appraisers, the tax rate would be raised in order to generate the same amount of tax revenue. The appraisers don't determine the taxes you pay. They just determine the values of properties to keep everything as fair and equitable as possible. When you notice a change in your property's appraised value, the change is the result of a never-ending quest for fairness and accuracy. Appraisers are graded on their performance, so there is a detailed system to get accurate valuations. First, the appraiser looks at similar properties that have sold, their sale prices, and the terms and conditions of each sale. That's the reason your home won't just be compared to the place next door. Studying things like square footage, age, and location helps appraisers determine how comparable another property is to yours. Even seemingly small details, like an extra bathroom or finished basement, can result in significant differences in value in two otherwise identical homes. Appraisers maintain a thorough database of real estate information to make this process as precise as possible. Changes in value are typically the result of local real estate market sales or major changes to a property. Remodel a kitchen or finish a basement, and your property's value could increase. When you see your home's appraised value, you can rest assured that the number has not been drawn out of a hat, nor generated with anything but equity and accuracy in mind. Long story short, appraisers are here to help, not trying to hinder. Their focus is accurate values, not tax collection. The only things an appraiser chases are fairness and equity, and they take great pride in it.
A quiz will be emailed to you after this meeting. But, yeah, so, that is on our website. It's, it's free to share, along with a lot of the Q and As that offer some more simplistic, more easily understood examples of how the process works. And then I do plan to work with Josh to get some of the Q and As posted on Facebook, to get it out to those individuals, too, that may, may be watching our Facebook page more often. So, feel free to share that website with anybody that you may know that has questions. Now, if there's any other questions for me or Aaron, more detailed questions would probably have to go straight to our assessors. Just, they're the more qualified ones to answer the more detailed questions.
Jared, do you have the, Jared, go ahead.
I was just wondering, I was wondering, when do you think this process will be done?
So, we hope to have everything completed. So, the final step would be, is it Board of Review? Not Joint Board of Review. It's just Board of Review.
Yeah.
And that would be set for like Octo-, tentatively, October 24th. So, we would hope to have everything wrapped up by then. Of course, if the process works, if somebody has a question, they should come to Open Book, which will be at the beginning of October. That is a chance to talk to the assessors, discuss, you know, why they think their property value is assessed too high, provide examples, proof, documentation, et cetera. So, that's the first step to get your assessment changed or relooked at. The next step is to come and appeal whatever final decision, assessment decision is made on your property at the Board of Review. That would hopefully be, I guess that would be October 24th.
Yep.
And then the final step is if you still totally disagree, you presented evidence, still feel that you still have a very viable argument towards adjusting the given assessment, you would have to take that to a Wisconsin Circuit Court to appeal it. So, after October 24th, tentatively, our steps would be done, and then if somebody still had an issue, they would have to take it up with a higher court system.
So, they, anybody that has an assessment that changes from what it was in the previous year will get a letter showing what their reassessment was last year, and then what your newer assessment is. It obviously doesn't, as it was explained on here, it doesn't show how that affects your property taxes, because it really does not. But anybody that gets that letter, that's what I, that's the time where you're really going to get questioned about it, because somebody might see theirs jump or go down, whatever the case is. Probably not much arguing about this, unless they're trying to sell. But, or refinance. So, Jared, maybe, maybe you could just pick one or two Q and As out of there real quick. I, I don't want to elongate this meeting, but I think they do a really good job of the Q and As in there, too. And that's what Jared was getting at, is that you, as council members, are going to get questions, too, and so is the staff, too. So, I think making yourself familiar, not only with where it is on the website, but also making yourself familiar with what those questions might be and what the answers might be. Obviously, you don't want to give legal opinions, but if you can help the taxpayer a little bit, to not only steer them to the right place, but to try and give them a good answer, so that they feel comfortable with, with the process. So...
Yeah, I think the, the two, and I already mentioned probably the one, but the two that I think would be most important would be if I am notified of a change in my assessment and I disagree, what is the proper process for appealing my assessment? Step one, Open Book. This is an informal session where property owners may come to view the new assessment roll. Property owners may also meet with the assessor to discuss the assessment of their property. Property owners may also present any evidence pertaining to value, to, or to value to the assessor for consideration. Step two, after the Open Book, would be the Board of Review. In making the decision to appeal, the property owner should be aware that, one, the assessor's value is presumed correct unless proved otherwise, and, two, the evidence presented must establish the fair market value of the property. The best way to establish value is through a recent sale of a comparable property or a recent real estate appraisal of the property, which would be done privately. The third step would be what if I am still not satisfied after going to Open Book and the Board of Review? And it would be a property owner has to obtain, has, has the option, sorry, to appeal the decision to the Wisconsin Circuit Court, or a Wisconsin Circuit Court. Probably the next one that would be of pretty good value would be if a new assessments are made at full value, won't it raise my taxes? And I'll kind of dumb this one down a little bit, just that there's four paragraphs. Essentially, it goes into saying how taxes are determined, again, through the mill rate and what the city, county, technical college, and schools need to operate. It's all divvied up, and that's how the property taxes are determined. And then it just offers a, an example, simplified example of, you know, how they address the inequality. So, to illustrate how the levy affects your assessment, we'll look at a fake town called Badger Town, a community of two people or residents. Each resident owns a house valued at $100,000. Badger Town's tax levy is $2,000, the amount needed to cover its expenses. Since each resident owns 50% of the total property in Badger Town, they would each pay 50% of the tax bill, which is $1,000 each. If property values in Badger Towns, in Badger Town go up 10%, then each property is assessed at $110,000. The amount they pay in taxes, however, remains the same. Each resident still owns 50% of the total property in Badger Town and must pay 50% of the 2,000 tax levy, or $1,000. Same thing, if each property is worth $80,000, they still are making up, you know, they're each 50-50% or 50-50, 50% of the property value, and they would still pay $1,000 each. So, those are two probably big ones, but there are other ones, like how is the reevalu-, reevaluation being carried out? Will they be coming to my door? Some things that have already probably occurred. When will the new assessment go into effect? What if they wish to obtain additional information? Contact the assessors. So...
Thank you. We haven't had a reval. I can't remember when we had one. It's been a long, long time. 2005?
And I think 2005. And to make this clear again, this is a requirement per the state. Again, fairness and equity throughout the state. So, we were out of compliance substantially, and the state gives us so many years to get into compliance. And if we don't, the state takes it upon themselves to do the revaluation process for us and then charge the city. So, again, fairness and equity throughout the state is what they're trying to accomplish. The goal is for us to accomplish it in the city, and it made more financial sense for us to take it on through our assessors than to have a state agency that would need to do a lot more background work, data collection, et cetera, to do the reval and charge us more. So, it was the best bang for our buck to just do it ourselves and make sure that we are using the assessors who really know our community already.
Thanks. Anybody else have any other questions? All right. Guess we're, oh, Communications, Recommendations of the Mayor. Really have nothing tonight. Remember, though, that I am going to be on vacation from the 11th through the 21st, so Paul Mayo will be running the meetings. I, I am planning on being in remotely, of course, for those meetings. So, anybody else have anything for the good of the night? Looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Hagan?
Second.
Motion by Olson. To adjourn. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Again, say no. Motion carried. I didn't want you to get out before 7:00, so, we'll return to 7:04 PM. Have a great night, everybody. Drive safe.